Next item, please.
Special report, strategic plan, Ms. Fatma Faraj and Dr. B. Dan Patterson.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
We're presenting a comprehensive strategic plan for the district for the next three years. I wanted to take the opportunity to thank everyone from our stakeholders group, from in and outside the district who served on the advisory committee to develop this comprehensive plan that was the result of culminating an extensive research, collaborative discussions, community input, ensuring that our stakeholders' voice was heard and our staff, specifically staff's voice, was heard. A strategic plan for those in the community who have not heard of what the strategic plan is, it's a document that articulates the organizational mission and vision as well as the goal and the implementation plan. We're going to go through it in details. Dr. Patterson, although he was not here in the beginning when we started the plan, he still played a vital role in completing the work on this plan. And I know that the strategic plan is a document that goes public, it's posted, it's in our schools and district. It does not have all of the details. It is clear and concise, but it does have the specific language that drives our actions in the district. Again, the purpose of it was to develop the shared mission, vision, and values, and to promote productive decision-making and help students reach their fullest potential. We have followed a process that we followed in the past, but it was refined based on our experience. Every time we go through the process of strategic planning, we learn more and we tweak it to better serve our students. We did still interview different entities to hire a consultant to support us with this work, and we ended up selecting Michigan Leadership Institute, Mr. John Silvery, who's done a wonderful job on multiple opportunities in the district. We have over, we had over fifty-four, fifty participants from the community and from the district. We really thank them for their support. We had initially anticipated having three community forums. We ended up having four and additional steering committee meetings. Thank you, President Berry, for serving on the advisory committee as well. Yes, if we can click on the plan, and we often refer to the plan for any initiative that we develop or we implement in the district, it is available for the public on the district website. If you go under Resources and Strategic, actually, it's under...
District info.
District info, strategic plan, you're going to get the detailed plan with all of the focus areas, goals, strategies, and action steps.
And then we have our stakeholders.
The stakeholders are on page two, I believe. Their names are listed in the plan as well. All the stakeholders who participated in the community forums and participated in developing these focus areas and goals. With this plan, as with the last one, we came up with four focus areas similar to the last plan, but a little bit different, again, based on our work and the stage we're at, at the district level. Each of the focus areas has one smart measurable goal, two to three strategies, multiple action steps, and for each of the action steps, we have an implementation timeline and by whom, meaning that who is it assigned to for accountability purposes, the start date and the due date for the very specific action steps. And we also have what's called indicators of success. How do we know what we said we're going to do is completed? Or if it's not, why not, and how do we tweak it?
So the mission and the vision is really what drives the work, not of just the district, but also of the strategic plan. This was the third strategic plan I had the opportunity of working on, excuse me. And as Mr. Faraj mentioned, I was only able to come in at the end of this one. But the first one was back in 2016, and I believe that's where both of these vision and missions were redrafted again. And each of the last two iterations of the strategic plan, the group has looked at each one of them and, you know, thought is this something that we do need to update or revise? And each time, they've thought that both of these are still relevant and have served the district well and will continue to serve the district well. So our vision particularly is all over the place in our social media, and the committee member felt that these are still very relevant to the work that we're doing today. In our previous strategic plans, we also have had staff commitments to students. These are some things that have been updated in the recent strategic plan. The stakeholders were very thoughtful about these, and they took a lot of time unpacking each of the statements. And they really wanted to make sure that these were updated and relevant to the needs of our students today. And they also wanted to make sure that they were very specific and things that we could actually, you know, measure and make sure that we're holding true to. So one of the things that they were, they felt very strongly about was inclusion of student safety, not just physical, but also just social and emotional and just their, you know, emotional safety as well. So I won't read all of those to you, but those have been updated based on the feedback from our stakeholders. And it was very clear that everyone is very committed and cares about the outcomes of our students and supporting them and making sure that they're successful. And then...
One additional section that was added to this plan that was not in the previous plans is the district commitment to staff. We often hear the vision, students first, and we also hear, what about staff? We do have, we value our staff. We want to make sure that we are investing in them and we are providing them the opportunity for growth and adequate professional, precise professional development that they always ask for as well. So we created what's called district commitment to staff, and the advisory committee worked very hard on this specific section where we looked at it from all aspects, not only professional development and staff well-being, but is also providing what they need on a day-to-day basis. This too played a role in developing the focus area, focus area number two, which is student and staff well-being. So the committee together, or the advisory committee, came up with about nine to eleven focus areas, and we ended up selecting four. They voted on four. But those that were not selected, they went into these four as strategies or activities. And also the staff, district commitment to staff also was articulated under these focus areas as strategies and activities. So we made sure everybody's voice was heard, and we made sure that all stakeholders were represented. As you can see, we have four focus areas, instructional improvement and innovation. This really has to do with teaching and learning. And it has three strategies under, with one goal. The first one is professional learning communities and MTSS academic. MTSS stands for multi-tiered system of support. And for example, I'll give a very simple example, the early dismissal on Tuesdays falls under this. As I mentioned before, this is a culminating and comprehensive plan that's clear and concise, but there are many systemic, smaller plans in the district that would fit under these strategies. Portrait of a Graduate is another strategy, and specially designed professional development also goes along with staff well-being. A second one is student and staff well-being, and the first one is the multi-tiered system of support, but on the affective side, which is social, emotional learning, and the non-academic areas that we need to provide to the students. Diverse, equitable, and inclusive environment. We have a DEI plan in the district. We have a DEI steering committee in the district that developed the plan, and that entire plan, with its accountability, falls in this area. We have staff wellness, and we also have stakeholder engagement, President Berry mentioned before. In this specific area, the advisory committee had a lot of discussions on how do we improve that? We know we send surveys. We know that we invite stakeholders to hear their voices. But what else can we do to make sure that their voice is actionable, their voice is heard? And how else can we reach out to the community to include them? Safety and security and facilities and infrastructure are under the fourth focus area, which is facilities and infrastructure. And again, we developed the one pager. It looks different than the last one a little bit, but we do have the district highlights and the district by the numbers in the first, in the top section, and the focus areas on the lower section. We do have the district commitment to staff on the top right corner of this document, and we have the vision and mission, which really, if you have it hanging in a student, in the district office or in the school office, you have the comprehensive plan in front of you. And the plan is to distribute those to the buildings on Thursday in the next gen admin meeting and to have them around in our district offices.
And part of the strategic plan process is looking at our data. Mrs. Hilda Irani, Mrs. Faraj, in the assessment department, did a great job getting the data together and presenting it to the group in a very easy to understand way. We obviously looked at standardized assessment and student outcomes. The fielding report outcomes were shared. We also used our recent Cognia review, the accreditation report, and their recommendations for the district, and also all of the stakeholder input that we received as well. And so I know Mrs. Faraj alluded to a few of these, but we have a few next steps. This week, we're going to have our general administrators meeting, so we'll be reviewing this with them. And we will also ensure that all of their building improvement plans will be, you know, aligned to our strategic plan, and we will also be aligning the budgets to those. And one of the next steps is we want to make sure that we are making progress on all the things that we've done in the strategic plan. So we have some progress monitoring and transparency tools, and we will begin filling those out this part of the year in January. We try to do this at least twice a year, just to make sure that we have some reportable action steps of what we've done towards the strategic plan, because it really is important to us that we maintain our transparency and our openness with the community. So these will be linked to our website so that everyone can see them as they're updated. I will just show you what they look like right now, even though they're not filled in. But for each of our focus areas, we will list out each of the focus areas, and then each of the action steps as we take place, we will put the dates that they were implemented, a short summary, and any links to any artifacts or data that we have to show the progress that we've made to these. So that way, over the course of the next three years, we can, we can see our progress. And then if there's anything that we are not making the progress, we need to, we can make sure that we address that and readjust our plans. All right. And so we showed you the district website, but there's also a QR code as well. But that will be up there for the next three years, along with the progress monitoring tools. And we will provide, you know, regular updates to the board and the community as to our progress to the plan. Oh, any questions or comments?
Trustee Thorpe.
In the focus areas under instructional improvement and innovation, what is Portrait of Graduate?
So this is a concept that's been around for a number of years, but it's been kind of regaining some popularity along the nation. It's trying to be very clear about what do we want the seniors leaving Dearborn schools to have, not just academic skills, but some of the softer skills, employability skills, and just some of the, like, attitudes we want them to have towards life, like being empowered lifelong learners, feeling that they have control over their own destinies, and being able to have those people and relationship skill. So it's kind of pulling together some of the initiatives that we've had for quite a few years, like the academy model that we've had, that's trying to align students to a purpose in their education, a lot of the work that we're doing in CTE and at the Berry Center. So trying to set up students to be successful, whether they're trying to get into a four-year university or trying to get into a trade skill, but really outlining that to make sure we can be thoughtful, that within our programming, we can get those skills to the students and make sure we're supporting them. So it'll be a list, it'll be a document with a list of probably somewhere between, like, eight and 12 kind of high-level skills that we want to make sure that students have. And we want to make sure that we can clearly show how our programming here in Dearborn will help support students to make sure that when they leave our schools, they're set up to be successful.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Trustee Mosup?
Yeah, I have a question about, now that the strategic plan is approved and out there, how do we make it visible beyond the school boundaries? So to the community, besides the website, what else are we doing to outline the strategic plan in layman terms to parents and stakeholders? One thing that I can think of right off the bat is the one pager. I think it needs to be in both languages. So parents with limited English proficiency, they need to understand the strategic plan for the district. But what else are we doing to kind of advertise the plan? And this is what we're doing. My second question is, as far as progress and monitoring progress, will we see percentage? How are we going to see that kind of progress outlined? Is it going to say this is on target? We're meeting this goal by this percentage, or how's that going to go?
I'll answer the first one. Okay, so in terms of making the strategic plan a living, breathing document, all of our actions in the district need to be derived from the strategies and activities. Sometimes when, when we think of plans, if we are implementing the plan, that in itself is making it visible to the community and also making sure that what we're doing is aligned. I, I know it is on the district website. We are encouraging our administrators, and not only encouraging, really, it's expecting, just like you see on the board briefs, every time we, we send a board brief, we are aligning it to one of the focus areas, or many times, it's aligned to more than one. So in our presentations as well, in and out of the district, and in our gen admin, and we ask our principals to do the same in their buildings. One thing we can do is also do that at the parents' meetings in the buildings. And also, I like the idea of translating the one pager. That's a great idea. So we'll proceed with that.
Thank you.
Yes. And in terms of the progress monitoring, that's an excellent point, because we do want to make sure that even though we're making some headway in each one of them, are we on target to meet our goals? So one of the things that I've seen done before, and I did this in a previous district, is when we met as a leadership team, obviously, you saw in the plan that each of these activities has a person that's responsible for each one of them. And obviously, it's a joint effort, but we have one person that's kind of overseeing each of these areas. When we would meet, we would have them really just give either a green light or a red light. Is it on track or are we off track? And we did it just with those two. We could be found if it's yellow, it's kind of, everything could be in the yellow because everything's in progress. So that's one of the things that, that we can do, just to make sure that we are trying to be attentive to making sure that we're meeting the timelines. In terms of a percentage of where we are, that might be kind of challenging with some of these, but that is something we can definitely think about to see if we might be able to lay out a little more specific timeline with some of those. But that's something we can definitely try to implement. But, but that is very important to make sure that we are trying to make sure that we are on timeline to meet these at the deliverable dates.
Trustee Pachikoff.
Well, to take on to that, when you say on goal, who determines where the goal line is? Because for some of these, it's going to be a moving target of, of progress. It's not going to be something that's definable and has an end point to it. So how are we deciding that we've even reached a goal? What's going to define the goal's end?
And I think that that will differ depending on each of the activities that we're doing. Some of them have a smaller window, because there are some things that are a little more manageable and do have a definite end date. But you are correct, some of these will be some ongoing initiatives. But like, for example, with the MTSS, Effective and MTSS Academic, even though those are going to be ongoing initiatives for several years beyond the strategic plan, we will always be improving on those. Some of the things that we're doing this year are very, like, structured steps towards those implementations. So for this year, as Mrs. Faraj mentioned, we're doing the early release time, and we're having our teachers collaborate on interventions and looking at data. And one of our big initiatives this year is we're training all of our teachers on how to build common assessments as a team. And so we are giving everyone a few PD days with that, and our deliverable for that is, at the end of this year, having our PLC show as an artifact, common assessments that they've, you know, written and, you know, given as a group. And so that will be one of our interim measures. And then next year, we will be taking on some discussions about reporting and grading. So with some of these, we have more structured targets within each one of them, even though many of these initiatives will go beyond the scope of the, the three years. And I'm not sure if you have any other comments with that, but, but some of them, as you mentioned, will be a little harder to, to have a full end goal. But we tried to do our best to make sure that we had something measurable and an artifact to look at to show that we met some progress towards it.
Thank you. I just wanted to add, for the academic goal specifically, we do have numbers and percentages of growth and proficiency, and we follow the state targets for those. We strive to meet those. And if we don't, we typically add it in the progress monitoring sheet. Again, that's the academic side, but for the other focus areas, there are normally activities that will be completed and evaluated for fidelity of implementation. That's how we monitor them.
Great. Any other questions? Thank you very much. Next item, please.
Citizen participation. Citizens wishing to address the board on agenda and non-agenda items for action who are signed in by 7:10 PM by submitting a blue card to the board secretary may speak at this time. The board may not be in a position to respond to non-agenda items. Therefore, speakers should not anticipate an immediate response to their comments or questions. For the benefit of all concerned, do not mention the names of students or school district employees. Please keep your comments as brief as possible. There is a three-minute time limit on comments made to the board. The first blue card, parent and community member. Russ Cavalluna would like to come to speak to the board about board organizational vote.
Thank you, Madam Secretary. My name is Russ Cavalluna. I come before you as a community member and a parent of school, schoolchildren at Dearborn. In fact, I, I think Bela Keys was a little girl who was running around the baseball field with my daughter the summer before the pandemic, who, remember, may remember, Bela Keys was one of the young ladies giving us the pledge. So you may have noticed, I come to a lot of these board meetings, and I watch what this board does, because I'm interested in both your public service and because my two most precious resources are invested in your care as schoolchildren. And I wanted to make a few comments, in addition to what the superintendent mentioned, appreciation of your public service as board members. Having watched you all and, and seen some of the toughest things you've gone through and some of the adulation you've received, I, I do want to say to the outgoing chair, excuse me, President, President Thorpe, thank you for your public service. It has not been easy. I don't think you've won any awards for Mr. Popularity, but you've done good work, and the community and the district is well-served by your leadership in tough times. President Berry, welcome back to the chair. It's something that I know you have experience in during a pandemic, and I look forward to your leadership in this school district during what hopefully won't be as hard as a pandemic, but no doubt, you'll be faced with difficult decisions. And I hope you know that many of us, parents of, and community members, trust your judgment and your ability to lead this team, which I've seen you do in years past. And to all of the trustees, board members, I was here a year ago when the election of your officers was difficult. It, it wasn't fun to watch. I can't imagine it was easy to sit there and go through. But we, as community members and as parents, we see this kind of difficulty around public service and around people who have power, and it often goes into a place of poison and name-calling, and places where institutions that are supposed to serve us all actually stop serving us. And what you all just did before you came into the full session here was have what I would recommend to you all as a wonderful ability to grow as a team. You had an ability to have a vote and choose your leaders, and it, it shows me that you all are willing to work together despite very, very difficult differences. And I can tell my children, and I can tell community members, that this board cares deeply about its role, even when there are very strong and difficult disagreements. And so I commend you all as board members for being able to do that. It's not easy. It's important, and you have shown an exemplary example of picking leaders in difficult times. And so as one community member who cares deeply about public service, public schools, and children, I want to compliment you on what you did today to vote with your leaders, and I want you to know you have my support for the entire year. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next, Nicole Elward, an employee would like to come to speak to the board about elementary library media classes.
Good evening. I am the library media resource teacher and the school librarian, Edsel Ford, and I'm here to advocate for the school library media program, and specifically the importance of the elementary library media classes. This year has been extremely challenging, having eight elementary schools without a librarian present in the building. Each semester creates an abundance of logistical problems. But the last week of the semester was especially hard on librarians and students. It's hard telling students, you won't see them next year. And some of the people have been in those buildings for several years and didn't get to go back and see them for the second semester. We need librarians in our buildings for the entire school year. I've discovered that many people don't know what we teach during our library media classes, so that's going to be my focus tonight. This year, our curriculum focuses on four areas, library skills, digital citizenship, research skills, and literary elements. We have a full year of curriculum for library media classes, but we had to cut what we teach in half this year. Some of the topics that we aren't covering this year include poetry, coding, Google Sheets and charts, author studies, digital, digital animation, excuse me, and information literacy. These are all important skills that we would like to keep in the library curriculum. Sorry, information literacy is something that is going to be vital in the future with the increase in the prevalence of AI. We usually include three to four inquiry projects every year, but now we're down to one or two because of the time constraints. The librarians have traditionally assigned technology grades for our students. And this has led to the assumption that we're technology teachers. But our technology grades are based on the Michigan Integrated Technology Standards, or MITCS. These standards focus on how technology is incorporated into student learning. And I want to share an example of what that looks like. The week of Thanksgiving, I like to read the book Balloons Over Broadway, which focuses on, "The puppeteer created the balloons for the Macy's Thanksgiving Day Parade." During the reading, we would talk about what a biography is, how a book with illustrations can be factual, and make connections with local parades. After reading the book, I show students a short news video about this year's new balloons, and then students will then share what character they think should be the next balloon using an online discussion board. The practice of using the online discussion board allows students to collaborate and respond to other students appropriately. And that's the skill I'm grading, but it's embedded in a larger literacy lesson. Our goal is to teach technology literacy and instill a love of reading and Our goal is to teach technology literacy and instill a love of reading and lifelong learning. These skills will support not only a student's future academic success, but also prepare them for challenges they will face once they leave the school setting. We're asking that next year, the special schedule is more equitable and all students have a full year of media classes. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole.
Lastly, we have a community member from Dearborn, Robert, that would like to come to speak to the board about strategies for focus on facilities, past projects regarding efficiency and how they performed.
Happy New Year. Ms. Farage and Mr. Patterson really did a great job at narrowing on most of my questions. I had a list of about 15. Now I got it down to one. In regards to the strategic plan outlined, it's like they were expressing, it's very detailed and I'm looking forward to see how that rolls out going forward. I feel really kind of silly because they, they were spot on with the questions. And one of the main concerns that I did notice was the, the targets. And that would be, I believe you asked about the, the, what is going to be the benchmark? I'm here with Turn IT Solutions. We do with all IT regarding the building, including, and right now, with, with the heavy focus on GHG reduction, we're focusing in on HVAC equipment. That's just kind of the primary thing we're looking at right now, but that doesn't, it still includes lighting, the building envelope, and then obviously cameras, door access, things of that nature. Just wanted to make a introduction to you guys, let you know that we are here to service you. We are home-based here in Dearborn. We work with, in the private sector and have been able to achieve that goal. We believe that we can do that here for the district as well. So I do only have one question. I hope you guys answer. Mark Antrus, is he still the director of operations?
Try not to, try not to use names, please. If you have a general question, Dr. Maly can answer.
If, if there's anybody that could direct me to whom would be in the director of operations, that would be great.
Yes, yes. Get your information over to Mr. Mustland and he'll direct you. Or, or Tom Wall in the back.
Okay. I apologize.
That's fine. That's fine. Thank you. Appreciate cooperation.
That's all I have and keep being awesome.
I'm glad they answered 49 and yelled the 49 question.
Yes, absolutely.
Thank you. You have a good evening.
Thank you, guys.
Next item, please.
Action items. Move that action items number one through nine be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved? Support.
Oh, wait, back up a little bit, see if anybody wants to cool anyone.
Oh, I'm sorry.
It's okay.
Back to citizen participation. If there's any board follow-up.
Oh, yeah. Okay. Sorry. Jim? Trustee Thorpe? Any board follow-up?
I do believe I, well, I'll ask it now, but it's more of a follow-up, I believe, for a request for information that I had made, I think in November regarding the policies protection of staff, students from violence, both verbal and, and physical. Are we working on something to make sure that, that our, our staff are, are safe from student violence, whether intentional or non-intentional?
Yeah, and that's a topic I know.
And, and I apologize if something had come through during the holidays, I might have missed it.
Anybody else? Thank you. We can go to special consideration of an action item, please.
Yes, action items. Are there any agenda items on this agenda where board members or the superintendent wish to discuss and vote on separately? If there are, we will include, exclude those from the motion below.
Okay. Moving on.
Okay. Move that action items numbered one through nine be approved as recommended in this agenda.
So moved? Support.
You have a motion by trustee McDonald, supported by trustee Mosib. Are there any questions or discussion at this point? Okay. Are there any objections to the motion? Hearing none, please attach a unanimous vote in affirmative. Can we have a summary, please, Secretary?
Yep. Summary of agenda action items. Number one, approval of warrants. Number two, approval of an award to AMCOM. Number three through six, approval of non-instructional and instructional personnel items for P-12. Number seven, approval of financial statement per Board Report 23 hyphen 84. Number eight, approval of schools of choice policy elimination per Board Report 23 hyphen 85. And number nine, approval of donations.
Great. Thank you. Next item, please.
Next discussion item, policy updates, policy number 7410, maintenance. Policy number 5112, entrance age. Policy number 7217, weapons. Policy number 8500 for food services and policy number 8531, free and reduced priced meals.
Good evening, board. So the policy committee, the board policy committee has been reviewing many policies over the past several months. The policies that are for you tonight for discussion have been reviewed by the policy committee. Most of these just are technical changes, updating language that is out of date. So no major philosophical changes in these policies, just keeping us up to date and on target. These policies have been shared with you in board briefs for your review. And if there's no further discussion items or questions, I'd be happy to answer any questions that you have, but if there aren't any, then we can move on with moving these policies to the next board member for approval.
Are there any questions from Mr. Mustland? Thank you very much.
Yes, and apologies for not introducing you. Next, Board of Education Business, acknowledgements of correspondence.
Trustee Mosib.
I believe we did receive an email from our teachers' union president regarding cameras and gyms at schools.
And Dr. Maly and I had a discussion on that and we do have a plan moving forward that he'll share with all of us. Any other? Thank you. Next item, please.
Board Member Committee and Organization Reports.
We have a report from the finance. We had a meeting tonight and reviewing many different items. Military knew also in February, Mr. Wall will do a presentation to the board in regards to our finance committee. One of the changes that's going to be made is that we had a budget hearing meeting and also an adoption, all in the same month in June. That'll be changed. The budget hearing meeting will be May 13th and the adoption will be on June 3rd and he will discuss that further in his meeting. Adele, anything that you want to add or Irene?
That's it. Yeah, we, we did have an extensive discussion on the budget and that will be on, on discussion for the entire board next meeting.
Okay. Great. Thank you. I think that's your only report. Trustee Thorpe?
A question, President Berry. With the new year, when would you like trustees to let you know about committees that they would be interested in serving on?
You're a step ahead of me. I was getting ready to mention that later. I will be reaching out to everybody, like I said, try to get together for a coffee or breakfast or something. We can have those discussions then. I already heard from one of our colleagues that can be out of town and shared with me what they're thinking, but I welcome everybody calling me and telling me what they're interested in before we put that together because that's probably definitely that we need to get that together soon. Thank you for bringing that up. Okay. Next item.
Board Member and Superintendent Commentary.
Trustee McDonald?
Just once again, I want to commend everyone that worked on the strategic plan. It's, it's a terrific plan. I just have to say, I've worked in different organizations that had strategic plans and so often they don't do what they're supposed to do. This one, the way that you've set it up, it drives the district. It has everybody rowing in one direction. It's comprehensive, but it's easy to understand. The one-page layout is, is excellent because it keeps everybody focused on that. And even when the board receives information, we have what this pertains to as far as what part of the, the plan this, this information pertains to. So I think, like I said, it keeps everybody rowing in the right direction and it absolutely does what a strategic plan is supposed to do. So thank you so much for your hard work. Well done.
Thank you for those comments. Yeah, I sat in on, I think, all of those meetings and we pretty much had almost over 30 people in this room and some deep, deep discussions. People, stakeholders are very, very focused on what the district needs and very supportive. So a follow-up question is, is the committee names on the website?
Yes.
They are? Okay. Great. Thank you very much. Yeah. Thank you to everybody that helped. So appreciate that. Anybody else? Trustee Thorpe?
It was mentioned earlier about the changes and what it's doing with media. But this was also the first year where the first semester ended before the break, which caused, I'm going to assume, a lot of the, the instructional staff to have to adjust and try to figure out a way to take content and condense it by two weeks. So thank you to everybody for being flexible as we're going through the growing pains with this new academic calendar.
Okay. Great. Next item, please.
Next item, requests for information and our future agenda items.
Next item, please.
Future meeting dates. Tuesday, January 16th, 2024, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom. Monday, February 12th, 2024, P-12 Board Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Service Center in the Fring Franchi Boardroom. And Monday, February 19th, HFC Board of Trustees Meeting, 7:00 PM at the Administrative Services and Conference Center in the Rosenau Boardroom.
Great. Thank you very much. We are going to be in discussion of changing a couple of meeting dates. As soon as we finalize that calendar, we'll put it up. So to be continued. This meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.